All right, let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. If you would like to address the Planning Commission this evening during the public comment period or for an item that is on the agenda, we request that you fill out a Green Speaker Request Card and turn it in to staff prior to the agenda item. So for all the folks here, you can speak with the question. The meeting being recorded and available via Zoom. The Planning Commission will receive public comment through emails submitted prior to the meeting to staff or in person. Public comments will not be accepted via Zoom. Can we get roll call, please?
Chair DeRozzo.
President.
Vice Chair Viassari.
Yeah.
Commissioner Madden is absent. Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kuhn is absent. Commissioner Lethy.
Here.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Johnson has agreed to lead us in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, in the midst of war, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, and number one approval of minutes. So there's three dates of meeting minutes that we need to approve. And then I'm assuming we're going to do these in three separate motions. Yeah. Okay, so approval, starting first, with approval of minutes from May 21st, 2024. Are there any corrections or suggested edits to those meeting minutes?
I'm happy to. That we approved this at May 21st, 2024.
We have a motion, we have a second. That's me. All right, we have a motion and a second, and all of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Thank you very much. Right along, approval of minutes from June 18th, 2024. Any corrections or suggested edits?
As I recall, the only reason we didn't approve those last time is we did not have a quorum for them. There was the one that we only had four people and promised to not have a meeting, and so we didn't stay. I'm happy to move that we approved those.
A second.
All right, thank you. Motion in a second.
We must stay.
Okay.
Because there wasn't.
But this basically do have a quorum.
All right, so we have one extension. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have four, as one extension. Approval of minutes from August 6th, 2024, meeting minutes, any corrections or proposed changes?
I will stay.
So I think he was absent, he got one too.
Okay, we have one extension.
I'm happy to move that we approved the August 6th, which includes the discussion of the failed approval.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and then.
I used it up to the 18th that I was asking for, so I can actually stay from the 18th. Yeah, I mean, we wanted to be in a forum, so we're not going back to it.
Yes, so if we can't, yeah, we only have three of us for the June 18th, we'll have to hunt it again.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll, we'll come back for June 18th.
And August 6th, we have more?
Yes. So your motion, I seconded, motion in a second, and we have one extension. All of those in favor for August 6th?
All right.
Aye. All right.
We are, we don't have to stay with the reason, and so we believe in half the same to the people. This is quite a huge deal.
Oh, I don't think that was absent for both. What did the deputy say? She said that was absent for both. It was the 18th that you were here.
Yeah, the 18th says you were present.
I was absent for that one.
It seems, yes, the August 1st, eight people were absent, you were absent, and then. Yeah.
All right.
Good on that.
Should we approve this?
So the 18th.
I think we can do a few, but if we just read the 18th to the entirety.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we do, let's come back to the 18th.
Okay.
So for the 18th minute on June 18th, we have one extension.
Yes.
And then, even let's go ahead and do the voting. Can we just do the second, the motion, the second motion?
How many motions?
Our motion for the 18th.
Five seconds.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second, we have one extension. Other than that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have the extension on the 18th, Commissioner Johnson was absent.
Perfect.
That is correct. And then, right, in August, Commissioner Lethy was absent, but the other four were.
August 6th was like. Yeah. I was absent. Okay, abstain.
All right, we will run along here to, yeah. We'll run along to public comments for item that on the agenda. Let me find my notes, sorry, I have some things. Individuals are allowed three minutes. It is the Planning Commission's policy to refer matters raised in its forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act forgives the commission from discussing or acting upon any matter that is not agendaized pursuant to state law. If we get any emails or anything from anyone that wanted us to discuss those and surface those on fellow comments?
Yes, so we received an email from Commissioner Kuhn regarding item 7A, so we'll address those comments during the presentation. There's also a copy of that email in your packet after the staff request for 7A.
Thank you very much, you know me. Okay, moving on to announcement of conflict of interest. Are there any planning commissioners that have any conflicts of interest that they would like to share?
Yep, I am refused for item 7A because it is too close to my house.
Already? And I'm assuming I'm good there because we live like eight houses away from each other.
So your property is just on the cusp of the 1,000-foot boundary?
Yeah, it's like a very, very small place. Uh. Mr. Chair, can you take item 7B first? I can definitely do that. All right. Uh, other than Commissioner Harmon's conflict of interest for 7A or 7B, any other conflicts for 7A or 7B before we proceed? Okay. Uh, so let's do 7B, Planning Projects Dashboard Demonstration. Study session to review the planning project website and discussion of information available to the public about projects. And I will turn it over to City Staff.
All right, so as you noticed in your packet, there's a very short schedule for 7B. And it's just a little overview of what we've been up to for the past couple of months. After we brought the planning processes update amendments to the commission in February, and it's following the study sessions with council, your commissioners and your commissioner is brought up the concern that, well, we're seeing less projects from the ARC standpoint, open commissioner standpoint, how we kind of keep track of these that are being occurred at the director's side. So what your request was, was for staff to develop a web sort of web-based application. Are you able to see applications, data contacts, and how still maintain that stream of information? So I'm going to share my screen. You can just take it as we go. Okay, so. We close out. Yeah, thank you. So we created what we're calling the Planning Projects Dashboard. This is for any project that is going through a planning entitlement. It's pretty much all of the permits on our roster except for signs. And there's an exception made for certain residential projects. The reason we excluded signs is because we process so many every month. I'd say like three, three to seven signs every month. And we just think, because we're seeing so many of them, they don't go through here in process. It's just an approval letter. So we figured we'd rather just, you know, just kick it off since they're going to be added and removed so quickly. And then the exception that's been made for residential projects is that we're going to have them, one, be added as a new submittal, two, be added as an under review, and then three, yeah, as approved. So we're going to skip the period between under construction and complete. Just because for products that are in residential zones, we don't want anything to occur if other people know that the project on construction, that can be privacy concerns or anything else like that. So those are our two main projects that you won't see too much of on this permanent dashboard, signs and residential projects. So we'll go into it, starting from left to right. We've got a list of all of the projects that we're currently working on. And you can see that they are color-coded here. There's orange, it's not orange, yes, it's reddish, I'm sorry, colored. Blue, okay, blue, green, and pink. So based off of these, we've got this product statuses that I mentioned earlier. We have approved, under review, under construction, and new submittals. One category that you won't see on our map is going to be complete statuses. And these would apply for projects that have just recently completed construction. We haven't had any recently, so you won't see any on this map, yes.
Just as a matter of sort of the order that these would occur for one project, is it new submittal, under review, approved, then under construction, then complete?
Yes, yeah.
It would be nice if that was actually the order that they appeared in.
That is.
It would be like, look, it's like, how does it go?
Oh. Oh.
New submittal could be the top.
Yeah, this is like, like even chronological, like it would be, it would be nice if these appeared in the order of like the, the flow that the projects would occur in. It's a little, it's a little.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
But it's right.
Yeah, so, so as Commissioner Harmon provided, yes, it's going to, it's going to have those five statuses. So every project except signings and residential will go through the new submittals, under review, approved, under construction, and then complete. So based off of this, this here, we can search by street, we can also search by residences. So you'll notice that most of our projects that have lived on our webpage now exist here. We're trying to shy away from individual webpages just because it's such a headache to keep updating them. So this is one central place for all of our projects to, to be updated.
It's management system.
So yeah, just to demonstrate, we've got, say, all the projects on San Bruno Avenue. So we've bought, we've seen these, El Camino, there's so many on El Camino. So it's just one way for us to stay organized for our projects. And then based off of our order of going left to right, focusing in the middle now is our map, and that's kind of where hopefully all of our focus stays. So if you zoom in on the map, you'll notice that the number of projects here reflect what you see in the map. So I think for us, that's been really helpful because if you live in a certain area, you really only want to focus on what's around you. So that's just one thing for us to provide the information to residents in the area. And so, like I said, this map, excuse me, the items on the left and right reflect what's on the map. So you can saw that this list also decreases the number of projects on the map. All right, and then moving over to the right-hand side, we added a little note that if you click on a row, you filter by status. So we'll just demonstrate that here. So we'll look at all the projects that have been approved recently. So you'll see only the green items here. If you go down, take a look at either one of these, and when you click on them, you should zoom in. So you'll be able to see if there's any secret documents or if there's any upcoming milestones, and you'll see that. It's great. Thank you. And if you have any questions, no matter what the project status is, you'll be able to contact them. So that would just, it's just a hyperlink to like my email. So you'd be able to just reach out to whichever planners in charge of that project.
So you can develop those as a program.
This is a program, but we did have to customize the code for it to do what it does. This program is called Dashboard, and it's from a company called Esri. So all of this is all online based, and Esri does a really good job making it, making it easy to learn. So we just had to customize the code to have straight orders or to have it, have these actions reflect on the list or on these color-coded columns.
Do we have access to the other machine? I usually, as you know, call both of you for updates on a particular one or what's taking place, and this really gives the answers to them.
Yeah, so I, I wouldn't say that we'd have access to edit the dashboard, but.
Oh, I'm wondering.
Okay.
It's not, it's not for the purpose of editing, it's for the purpose of the mission or the mind dissection.
Yeah, so our, our intention for this study session is to, one, receive preliminary feedback, and two, if your is up for it, we'd love to publish it and have it on our department webpage.
So the, the goal for this would be embedded directly on the San Bruno dot C A dot gov website or a link out to it.
So it would, that's an option. Our department probably works, they have not embedded there. This is like a map-based software. They have not embedded theirs.
RCHS.
I think, yeah, our G I S. It's, I, I really think it looks better if it's not embedded, so I wouldn't want to see things embedded. It could be a link even. I just.
I mean, you potentially could, like, you could say, have it sort of take over an entire page, but still, I feel like it, it is in some ways, I don't know, maybe I'm overthinking it. Like, I, I feel like for some users, having it be within the city website, like, you know, if you're given a link and the link goes to sanbruno.ca.gov slash planning dashboard or whatever, like, that is more trustworthy than like this weird domain name there than like, if you don't, like, I am aware of RCHS, like, I have that company I'm familiar with. For somebody else, they're going to look at that and go like, what is this? Is this the shame or?
Okay. Um, okay, I see what you mean. I think our, our goal was to just have a little hyperlink, but if you wanted to go back to the department page, we've provided a little link here to take you back.
Yeah.
So I'm.
Sure.
The intent was to just have the link.
Yeah, I mean, I can see the argument either way, but yeah, I feel like, I mean, I guess you could just alias it, you could just put it in the H D access, so you can cancel.
Pro- process wise, well, can we just do the presentation and then we'll do the public comment in one time to weigh it up?
Yeah, I, I'm also, uh, uh, the bottom right, we're, we're going to make details for each project, so what we'll see here is the location, the description, uh, the status here. And like I said, all of the secret documents, if there's any support, they can be hyperlinked into this box here, into this info box, and then you'd be able to contract anything. Uh, one thing I did want to highlight for after, for the sort of projects that are currently under review, is that some of them have a notification list. So as a member of the public, you'd be able to sign up for the project updates. And what this looks like, it's just a simple Microsoft survey, and it goes into Excel spreadsheet. So if there's any updates to this dashboard that our planners want to share with the public, then they'd be able to have access to everyone that's interested in that project. I wouldn't say this needs to replace our maintenance, but it does help better organize. When people email or call us and say, hey, I'm going to sign up for blah, 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 we tell them, very good, this is so much easier. Sheet. Yeah, and I think that is pretty much it for our presentation. For the larger, larger projects like Tanfren, they do have their own notification list, so this is based off of the organization that we're working with. For it's on Tanfren update. Yeah, I think, I think we can open this floor with questions or any comments kind of a question.
Any further questions or comments before we procedurally go to public comment?
I have a question. You know, as you present this, and mine goes into greater picture. And other same projects, which are not part of the I'm Department. However, Public Works, your leaders, sometimes things taking place that you see and you're wondering, you're driven by your wondering. The place to go, are they also adopting some of these?
Yes, so Public Works has their own take on this web basement. And what they're using is called Story Maps. It's still operated by our, still owned by Esri. But it's, I can show you a little bit about what, what we're doing. And I work with their G I S tech, and we kind of talked about the pros and cons. This is Story Maps, we're using dashboards. So they do have a web map based off of their, their work.
I believe this is about enough because you can get calls, and it'd be so probably to be able to say, which of our teachers in Brooklyn do it in the machine?
Yeah, and, and they've done a really good job too. See. So they've got a, a collection of maps here. There's a payment moratorium. On the this map, there's payment projects that are active. And then there's current projects. So I think this is a great way, if we had a lot more information, a lot more language to use. But in this case, we found that the dashboard helped us better understand by the project status and how we can categorize that. Excellent. Thank you.
Um, this is, I, I'm amazed. I didn't make it to this at all, and I think this, I love how it's so accessible to public because there's not the, you know, the public meetings, but for a lot of these, this is fantastic, and I'd like to contribute because I mean, it's, yeah. And I'm also curious, like, how this is useful to staff? Because it just, it, it sounds like if it's beneficial to staff as well, that's like a super double win. And then the other things, I wonder if this is useful for the states, like with our transparency with any of our arena housing? Or is this anything that helps us meet our goals for the housing?
It certainly is going to be helpful for staff, because even as we just get a camera call asking about what's the status of something, they'll be able to go to this. For the state, the, we're very prescribed what, what we have to report to them. They literally provide us with a table that we have to put things into. So this wouldn't help with any of those things. And also the state asks for certain details that admittedly the actual person isn't going to be interested in. So it certainly helps staff on a day-to-day basis. It's not going to reduce the time they have to spend on, on the state report.
Thank you.
Mostly following up on that, I mean, it's probably not at the term, I can't remember whether I had this conversation when before you came here, but when we were talking about the housing element inventory, there was a conversation around like, you have tools like for redistricting, they publish the mapper system where the, you know, citizens could come and like play with it and see what was possible with the lines. And I think next cycle, it would be great if we had a tool that said, here's the map of San Bruno. Here's how many units we're signing. Here's the zone capacity on each parcel. Go by it. Like, what do you, what do you think? Where do you like, and rather than having people sort of narrowly focused, like give the average citizen access to the big picture. And it's totally doable with tools that exist today. And it's, and we've got plenty of notice on whatever six years out before we need to do it, so.
Well, they do tend to give us the final number, leaving them.
Maybe, yes, but the infrastructure for it, like the ability to present the zone capacity, maybe some feature for potential, you know, rezoning, the variance, because we're considering things like ballot measures, you know, like, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff you can do to make it.
Well, and, and even if, even if we simply say, we won't know the real actual number until this date.
Yeah.
But we're just going to use last number.
Totally.
Where would you, it's still the same question, how would, how, how would you spread it out?
Yep. Yeah, as far as, I think this is great, and my only two concerns, one was we should, it looks to be like it's sorting by, just by the count currently, and we should force it to always sort by the sensible order. Uh, the, the project status and count diagram, like it should always show the new submittal first and under review, right? And, and then, yeah, I think, you know, in H D access forward, so if you can give somebody a, a simple memorable URL that they can use for it. And it goes to a bigger thing.
So are you able to also look at people's parcels numbers, whether it's business or, or residential, if you look at the parcel number, address, and everything with parcel view?
Uh, we'd be able to add that as a layer, so we could certainly add, um, parcel data and parcel lines.
Well, we have a G I S.
Yes, we do have a public G I S that users can go to. So you'd be able to look at the same sort of information, this one's just a little more data-heavy. So this one definitely has a parcel number. It's, it's more limited, I'd say. It's a little harder to read, but this, this is available on our webpage. We just felt that it was a little bit busy for our purpose of the map.
I don't understand. So can we just put something in like Sweeney Ridge and see the homes around there? And see what, what that looks like. That's the residential area. If someone wanted to know, Sweeney Ridge is a blocking trail, I mean, to see what that looked like. Or, or you have to put in sleep dot C.
I'll receive it, sure. Um. So we were to provide a specific location, would you mark the map as you know that?
Or, it's to sort of know what you want. Someone would want to know who's parking, you know, you want to know if it's residential, if you have to park. Park far away, you know, it just gives them sort of the earth's look, earth, overlook.
Yeah, I think we can change.
But it gives you all some more information.
Yeah, we can change the base map, and this one, this option is available to everyone that can use this webpage.
But I, I, I think your question is, can you put in some marker, see what projects are around it? Or just see more, more data and mapping about what's around it?
But I understand this by commissioning, it's not designed to have somebody use it as a go-go concept.
Well, because I think if, if, if you were looking for just uh, what projects, what planning projects are going on in the area.
Yes.
Uh, that, that'd be one thing, and you'd use this tool. If you wanted something other than just planning projects, you might use the other G I S tool.
So if you wanted to know if there are any projects in that Sweeney Ridge area, for instance, maybe just type in, you know, the goal by address or by. Yeah, you can test. How would it be if you?
Sweeney Ridge trail, yeah, I suspect it's Sweeney Ridge trail would be on the map.
Popular area. Actually, well, my house, you can see Sweeney Ridge. So that's why I'm doing the activity I do.
So just in this window, you can clearly hear it's one project, it's the, it's the household. Sometimes, which is quite far away from the trail. But by, by zooming in on, on generally where the trail is, you see what is else is in that window, and thus you would see also the, the Glengy subdivision. Again, that's, out, in my opinion, pretty far away.
Crossed line.
Yeah. But it does give you the, like, you put something in with an address or a, a place that is in the system, you're able to see what's near.
That's good. That's actually what I was looking for. That's the one going through, see what's taking place.
Just kind of a related question, but it's kind of planning, but I spent a couple of years in traffic and safety in this very room. And I know in the, I think the question is, is this something that is going to be featured and developed with the other boards and commissions? Except for, oh, for example, when I was on traffic and safety, there was always this discussion of whatever that meant. We don't know what it was, what it is, and whether it existed. But supposedly what it was, was this pipeline of inquiries by residents for speed bumps and intersections that were problematic. And then as a committee, we didn't have a tool like this, so it was difficult when both said, I've come here for five years in a row and requested this and you've taken no action. And then I guess we could have went in with the agendas and the different public comments, but it wasn't readily allowable to us whether we had an injecting community member as a committee. So I guess this is something, because it's so impressive, is it something that you think will be introduced to other divisions and bodies?
I think it's certainly possible. From a technical standpoint, there's, there's nobody that can't be done. It's, it's a matter of of resources and keeping it up. And since public works already has a number of pages, it, it does seem, does seem possible. We will still bring that up with the public works department.
I mean, just, just to echo what folks said, it's just a sense of transparency. I love it for the communities to focus on what's going on and things are visible and processes that are still really pretty great. Um and.
Yes.
But please.
Well, that's a good idea, if it does go live on our website, can it be included in the um? The city manager's newsletter, because that would be a great place to.
Yeah.
Get the word out.
Yes.
When it goes live, we're going to be using social media, uh the newsletter and 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 such to share this.
Thank you.
Are there any uh here in town around, please take a bit of chance, thank you, it's so long ago. Um the town around there was um area by the planning department into. Inviting the public to see what's taking place, I don't know if there's anything there now, that process may be over. But this, that could be a place or something in the backseat of a place where they can actually see his lives and. Creating an event, watching, presenting it and. You know, when you're seeing a lot of people who wouldn't understand the process and wouldn't understand what G I S is and those types of. Like some some training concept. So even cable, you know, cable.
Yeah, we can look into those things.
Certainly don't want to have. All responsibility, it's probably very limiting for. We're just trying to inform the public.
YouTube video. Yeah, yeah. So I have three, thank you for your hard work, this is really nice. Number two, just to confirm, this will be available on the planning website or the cities. Webpage, under planning department, right, and there'll be like a hyperlink or something.
Yeah.
They will get to that.
I think our intention is to. Put it on one of these sections here.
Yeah.
So we need to click on this rather than take you to a webpage or just type a link to.
Okay. And then the last one was the base maps that you were showing, can the user pick their own base map?
Yes, yes, they can.
Okay, so it's not something you pick and it's uh generic for everything.
Correct, so what we're looking at is, this is the public facing page, so. Uh we're interacting it with it as you would ever with the public. Um and then this is the author of editing page, so a lot more functionality here, see there's a lot more options. So. We're, I'm seeing it as like. I don't think of it as a frame. I'm I'm the one that's editing the frame and then the public is being um able to look at the heart underneath it.
Nice.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's also a good, thank you, and it's just super impressive. Thank you. This is what makes us see a light in operation. Um if there are any other comments, I think we can do open public comment and do that with the procedure. Um so let's open up a comment and then I don't know if anyone sent any queries or any messages.
We didn't receive any comments from anyone, so.
What do you want to? Uh so let's just go through the procedure of a comment. Uh submitted, trying to think where any motions closed, public comment.
Oh, sure, close.
Like, what do you do, I can't listen.
Uh there's no action taken on this one, this is just a study issue.
Alright, both public comment, um any last comments or anything on this, which we're not taking any action? No, just, I just, once again, thank you, it's it's what I kind of hope for when we start talking about this. So that's really cool.
I just know the goal was to quote the public comment, not to take action on it.
Yes, because I'm.
Uh already, so so going back to seven A and. Um the one commission moves.
Well, if if uh to the chair, if I could uh. Interject, because of an unexpected absence, uh if if. Uh the two commissioners who are within a thousand feet are. Uh of accused, then there's only three commissioners left, and so we don't have, we we won't have a quorum.
So the. The conclusion was that Chair DeRazo was also too close and it would be a concern.
It's it's. Because that thousand foot makes a corner of it, uh and um.
I don't even think it's a health department, I think it's like six thousand.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're, well, I mean, it wasn't, it was not anyway, yeah, like I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have been surprised, it sounds like you were one house further south.
I mean, if if, yeah, to, we're talking about what I think. Is probably a case of one to two feet. Uh uh. Because this is not a city hall, uh this is uh. Something that involves a.
Is that F P C?
Yeah, something that involves. One, if one of you took the risk. Uh it would be a risk to you being able to be a commissioner and that's not a risk you want to take. Uh I inquired with the uh. Um with our. Attorney's office that uh. Uh there there are, there is one. Exception if uh. We had all all seven here and four of you were conflicted. Then there is the ability that randomly one of you could 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 uh be part of it. Uh that's not, that's not the case here unfortunately, and so uh we we will have to have to continue the item, uh we would not be able to. Um. Um take any action on that, so. Uh we recommend that the planning commission continue this to the meeting of of October fifteenth, which is our next meeting.
I'm taking my attention to the chairman, so. I don't recall the project, but we ran into a situation somewhat like this, and I recall. I recall that if you start off at a forum, you can continue on. And you can get business. On that, on the item that it commissioners need to recuse themselves, but because you start off with a forum, business can be continued.
But we can't take any action is the problem.
Yes.
That wasn't understanding. Also start off at the forum, you can continue to conduct. It's such a long time.
Yeah, so I, and and then, I've been uh.
Two, three hundred.
That's just two. And uh the, this is difficult because our um. Our consultant, city attorney, is at a council meeting somewhere else right now, and so I'm getting texts as he's able to, um.
Sounds like we'd be safer to.
Yes, I I I don't think the risk is worth it.
I agree.
Uh in this case, if if this was simply a, oh, we have to do the hearing again. That's different, but if if we do something that uh causes any of the commissioners to to uh lose their ability to be a commissioner, that.
And it, and it's also, you know, you approve a sale of property and then somebody is unhappy with it. That that's, it is the sort of action that hypothetically could end up getting a living aid.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Correct. So. So we're going to run along, so I think age, any comments to staff? Wait, do we need to make a motion and continue? Yes, please.
Well, thank you.
Uh thank you. Can I make a motion? Oh, second.
I mean, we would need, uh we would need a affirmative vote to continue it and. If, I don't think we'll get in trouble for a vote to continue an item, so I. I think everybody should participate in perspective.
We will motion, we have a second, we have discussion of votes. I. Bye.
Okay.
Future meeting.
Yes.
Uh wonderful, thank you for that. Number eight, comments, uh comments from staff.
Yes, uh so at our next plan meeting, it is going to be in this room. Uh we have. Uh we plan to bring the planning commission. Bylaws. Uh for two reasons, primary purpose is to amend the bylaws to say the senior center is not our main main location. Uh but there are other aspects of the bylaws that uh we've seen has been updated in in quite a while, so we're working with the attorney's office to just. Clean things up, there's still mention of architectural review committee where where two of you will volunteer to be on it. So just bringing it up up to uh up to the, up to today's standards. Clearly, as noted, we will bring the uh uh. Not the, what was the address of the item, the six, six one eight San Mateo Avenue item, we'll bring that. And there's also, uh if it all goes well, we will bring a round of uh municipal code amendments. Uh to update portions of our codes to catch up to state law on housing. Uh this is a housing element of. Housing older implementation item, so it's it it it's a required action. So that is the fifteenth. The meeting after that, uh November nineteen. Uh is going to be a joint council, planning commission meeting where council's going to come to your meeting. It's going to be in the rack, in the, in in the. Larger room, um because of the size of it, and. At a minimum, there's going to be three topics, there may be more, uh there'll be an introduction to the climate action plan. An update on the safety element, uh just a, so FYI, the council funded a climate action plan, which um. Is, we have a consultant uh starting to work on. The safety element, uh the council has uh also funded this, this is a joint effort with the county and some other communities, so it's to bring the safety element. Part of the general plan, uh uh general lead was last updated in oh nine. Up to more more current standards with the new emphasis on. Climate ad, climate adaptation of your concerns with. Lawn fires and such, uh state mandated updates. And then lastly. An update on the Tantran project. Uh we expect the formal application for the Tantran project to occur in the next two weeks. Originally, we thought it was going to be. Even earlier, but uh the next two weeks. Um. Based on the preliminary plans that we've seen, uh it does look promising, uh it does look like they've taken. Both what uh. What the council established uh in their fact sheet as well as a lot of what they heard. Uh at the public comments, uh at that, uh at their open house location at the mall. Uh so excited to bring that. And then possibly, uh if if. Things line up, uh an update on the M T C T O C, the transit oriented communities. Policy. Uh as well as possibly the first conversation about. Uh amendments to the land use element. The amendments to the land use element. Is the, an end result of work on the T C P and a a financial assessment of the T C P. That doesn't, the land use element is the end goal, the T C P assessment is something that feeds into it. Uh so that, so for example, if if as we're talking about about the city, there's interest in changing land use designations outside of the T C P. All of that's on the table. The idea is to have this meeting as a presentation uh to show you where. Where where the certain land uses are allowed and what heights are allowed. And where the radius of certain laws about where we can require parking and not. And simply to have a conversation about are there areas where maybe it makes sense to change what's either they allow to use or the heights. Uh like, you know, for example. Um El Camino Real, there's the T C P portion that allows up to five stories, but then there there's another portion that. Is only allowed three. Yes. And then on the Tantran end. Right, it it it's not, and so. Uh again, the idea is to start having the conversations about uh if we are to change land uses. Somewhat prepared by the T C P assessment, but also, you know, just in general, uh movement. That is going to be, that is up in the air, uh depending on if we can get the exhibits all put together in time, I think we can, but um. We shall see. And then the last thing, which I should have said first, on August twenty seventh, the council did adopt the housing element, uh uh the. A couple of days prior, we had our last call with H C D where uh we got the magic letter saying. As 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 drafted, you comply. Um it's not yet the letter saying we're certified, after council uh uh. Re-adopted and approved the rezonings, uh we need to. Turn in to H C E that final version and evidence of the rezonings, then we will get the. Letter that says we are, uh we have a certified housing element, but we effectively do. Uh the H C D has said, you you checked every box and you've done everything, so. The council report included the changes that happened between planning commission and council and. They, in my opinion, they were pretty mild, so uh uh if if you're curious about it, you go back and take a look. Uh but we're pretty excited with with that, uh happy to have that behind us, so we can actually start working on the housing element implementation. Uh and with that, uh don't we have anything else to add?
Right. As I understand, almost all of the laws that you draw the house element, the language is. Has adopted a substantially compliant housing element, that's a certification letter really is not what matters, like for the law.
Correct, um we're along with you, I have not any comments from members. Would this be the place where we mentioned some citizens here in town asked us to look at the. The Glengy set cross full on earth. There's trash is accumulating, there's a painting carved, there might be some people living. Um they have to fight it. Mention that.
And and just as a sign note, uh you can pass those on to us anytime.
Well, I just, I happen to be sitting here.
Okay, yeah.
I'd also like, if if they are people who are. Moderately savvy with a phone, you can get the S B response app and they report directly.
And then the other one, I noticed the hotel site, you know, two blocks up from. Street, like it's approved, but it's not urban, built, it's like a fence and and it's starting to accumulate the body, litter and stuff. On the weeds and grinds. Is this last, I see of San Felipe?
One sixty year community?
Think so.
At San Luis?
San Luis.
Yeah, okay, yeah. That's the one with the fence, bacon block, they're running a political science.
Well, they took the fence down, fence is gone.
Yeah.
And it started to accumulate some weather, so.
We will look into that, the, just as a, an F Y I, the uh tool we. We created has just. You know, paid off because we were able to. That is actually, um embark, that is under. Uh is leasing the site to add additional parking there.
Oh.
Uh so it is going to be improved, uh the 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 owner is not expected to do any type of development for. Several years, so it's kind of a. Inner use, so it will be improved, but uh we will pass on to the uh. Embark to ensure.
Are they like a gravel, a gravel lot or something?
They have to pave it, uh but they are going to make it as a, uh they're going to size it so that it 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 doesn't require the full amount of. Stormwater improvements.
I mean, if the plan is to put up an actual building over it, paving with things, seems like you're going to have to tear up the pavement.
What would happen after this temporary, so we'll get to it. Uh under.
What's happening?
Uh embark the uh the, the Canada suite. Okay, that's that's all, thank you.
Any other comments? Seemingly all right, uh that we we reached agreement, the next regular meeting will be held October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, seven A M at San Bruno City Hall.
Very good. We're looking at reviewing how the pavement.